Stand as you are able, and Mr. Woods will lead us in an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father in heaven, we give thanks to you today for allowing us to have health and strength to meet here. We ask that you would bless this meeting and ask that you would bless us to vote in accordance to your will. We ask you, heavenly father, to please touch each and every one of us that we might show more love and compassion towards each other. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as for all. Thank you. Welcome to the regular scheduled public meeting of the zoning board of appeals of the Shreveport Caddo Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission. For public hearing agenda items, if you wish to make public comments on an application, we have comment slips at the speaker's stand next to the podium. For future notification purposes, it is very important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you come forward to speak. Please state your full name, mailing address, and zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in order and hear first from the applicant, then those speaking in favor. Ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application may then speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on our agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to comment. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decisions on a particular case by contacting our office at (318) 673-6480 after 1:00 p.m. tomorrow or by accessing our website at shreveportcaddompc.com. All ZBA decisions on variances to zoning within the city limits of Shreveport are subject to appeal to district court. All ZBA decisions on special exception uses within the city limits of Shreveport are subject to appeal to Shreveport City Council. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact either district court or the city council about their procedures as related to the matter you are concerned with. Copies of this document and the phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and in the entryway to this room. As a courtesy, please remember to turn off all cell phones while the ZBA is in session. The zoning board of appeals values your testimony and appreciates your compliance with these guidelines. We have the minutes from June 15th, 2022. If you've had a chance to read them, what do we hear?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved to approve by Mr. Hendricks, second by Mr. Crawford. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. All right, our first case today is 22-10 BAC, 3053 Rysinger Drive.
Good afternoon. I want to thank the board. My name is Tom Siskron.
One moment, sir. Mr. Crawford?
Mr. Chairman, before we get started, Dr. Siskron, I want to make a public statement that Dr. Siskron and myself are both employees of Willis Knight &amp; Health System, but I derive no economic benefit from Dr. Siskron. I am not his immediate supervisor and have no authority over him. We've consulted with the city attorney regarding this matter, and I am allowed to participate in this case and will be voting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford.
Thank you. Tom Siskron, I'm the owner of the property in question, 3057 Rysinger in Shreveport, 71119. I want to thank the board for allowing me to speak my case. I also want to thank the civic-minded neighbors that are around the area who are here to make sure their interests are protected, and I want to assure the board and my neighbors that I'm not going to infringe upon their interest in any way. What is in question here is approximately 900 square feet, 1,000 square feet of property near the lake on my property outlined in the map. And I bought the land in 2009 with the vision of seeing downtown Shreveport as I sat on my porch in the morning sipping my caffeinated drink. The property line that was delineated in 1926, I believe, followed the 172-foot contour line of the lake at the time. And since that time, due to erosion off the hill behind me from my neighbor's property, the lake has actually given up approximately 15, 20 feet of dry land, and therefore, the property line actually sits anywhere from 20, minimum of 10 feet, onto my property. And the current limitations of the city is a 10-foot setback from the lake, which the intent of that, when originally derived, is well noted and valid. You should not build all the way up to the lake, so they had a 10-foot setback. Now, my property line is anywhere from 10 to 20 feet back from the lake, and it is a permanent limit now because I've got a very fortified seawall there that goes well above the 172-foot line, so the lake will never come back in. But with the setback now 10 feet from that line, any house that I build is going to be even further from the lake. And that originally would have been fine when I bought the property because I had a great 130-degree view of the lake with the downtown skyline of Shreveport right in front of me, and I even built a pier that picture frames downtown Shreveport skyline so I could sit and look at it. I'm a lifelong Shreveporter. I grew up here, went to school here. The only thing that took me away for four years was the Air Force, and I chose to come back to Shreveport, unlike many of my friends. And I've got a lot invested in Shreveport and a lot invested in that property with plans to have a nice home overlooking Cross Lake in Shreveport. And that piece of property is all about the view. You don't buy a piece of property there to be suffering with the spiders and the bugs that come off the lake. You buy it for the view that makes the spiders and the bugs worth it. What's happened since then, in 2018, is my neighbor to the south built a enormous boathouse that unfortunately, because of the shape of my property, cuts tangentially across my shoreline. And now, when I stand on my property, I see a boathouse. And that's a view from the south side, that's the view from the north side. So where I was originally going to build my house was going to be, you know, further back this way on the property, and I had a view of the entire lake. But now, if I build the house, I'll be looking directly at his boathouse. And what I would like to do is be able to shift the house a little bit north along my shoreline so I can, if you'll put the picture of the north area, there's a picture that shows around the pier. I don't know if you have that one. But I want to shift the house footprint a little bit north on my property line. But because of the shape, you can see how it comes to a very acute angle, there's not much room up there, and to put any meaningful amount of house footprint in that corner would be very difficult, if not impossible. But if we move that setback limit back to my property line, which you can still see from the red line, I don't know if you could maybe indicate that on the picture so everybody can see it, the property line is that, is actually the thick line above that thick line. That's the property line, and it's 15 to 20 feet away from the lake. The next line up from that that's going through where that house is, that's the setback line. So if we eliminate the setback line, I can build the house a little bit further north. I can have at least one room of the house where I can look out over the lake and see the lake in the downtown skyline rather than see the boathouse. And it's hard to appreciate in pictures, but when you're standing on my shore, his pier is literally speaking distance from my shoreline. If I'm sitting on my back porch and he's walking on his pier, it's going to be like we could say, "Hey, neighbor," you know, and he could stand there and look in my back door. If I move the house a little further away, it would be a little bit more privacy over there as well. But, you know, long and short of this, my request is that, you know, hardship is hard to define. It's kind of like value. People find value in different things. And a hardship to me is not going to be a hardship to somebody who doesn't want a lake view. They say, "Who cares?" Particularly someone who's making the decision without ever seeing the lay of the property. But I can guarantee you, it's a hardship to me, having invested 10 years' worth of literal hard work, which I built my seawall, I built my pier, all permitted through the city. I planned to build a house. It's a hardship to me to consider that I have that view rather than the view of the lake and the downtown skyline. And I can assure everybody involved, and particularly my neighbors, that it will not impact anybody. It's just, it's just a little bit moving closer to the lake. Everybody else around me is going to still have their view. I'm not building anything in front of anybody else's view. Both my neighbors have voiced their support of my plan, and they chose not to come today. But I humbly request that the setback be eliminated to the property line, the lake is still protected as intended by the letter of that regulation by at least 15, if not 20, in some places, feet of protection. The city will gain in having the shoreline improved with a nice home. I don't intend to build a shack there. I'm going to make it look nice, and my pier looks nice. If you can see a picture of my pier and the other one, it's actually won several international architecture awards. So I'm not just doing this just to land grab. I'm trying to make my property something that I can enjoy for the rest of my life the way I intended, and I appreciate all's consideration of that.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak for case BAC 22-10 BAC? Anyone wish to speak against case 22-10? All right, what do we hear?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the applicant's request of 100% variance to the 10-foot waterfront setback required by the Cross Lake Overlay District and that the property owner be allowed to build up to his property line.
I'll second it.
All right, motion by Mr. Crawford, second by Mr. Hendricks. Any discussion? All right, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. All right, case number 22-11 BAC, Plug Pines Road. Is there a representative, Mr. Kandalas? All right, is staff aware of anyone who's supposed to be here today for this case?
We didn't have a confirmation. We did have notification of the date and...
All right, well, the chair makes a motion to go out of order and move this case to the end of our agenda. All right, we'll move case 22-11 to the end of today's agenda and give some time to get here in case they've been held up. I will need to vote on this. If you'll open the voting machine. All right, so this vote is to just go out of order and move this case to the end of our agenda. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. All right, so case 22-12 BAC, Fern Marketplace Limited, Fern Loop.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Amit Patel, and I guess I'm representing this case for Fern Marketplace Limited on behalf of Vision Development, a development company that is looking at developing this property in the near-term future.
I will need a proper mailing address for you to receive information to...
I'm sorry, sir?
I need a mailing address.
Mailing address?
Yes.
Would you like me to state that on the record?
Yes, I need your name and mailing address for contact purposes.
Sure. My name is Amit, A-M-I-T, Patel, P-A-T-E-L. My mailing address is 16620 North Freeway, Houston, Texas, 77090.
All right, thank you, Mr. Patel. Please continue.
Thank you. So, thank you so much for taking the time to consider our request here for a variance. Our development company specifically specializes in hospitality products, specifically hotels. This site located at Fern Marketplace near the intersection of, I guess, Fern Loop and East 70th Street is a vacant commercial lot, Zone C3, which makes it an ideal zoning for a hospitality use development. We're requesting a variance from the city in regards to the parking space requirements that are defined in the set codes for the development standards. Our hotel we are proposing is for 112 rooms. It's going to be a Homewood Suites by Hilton, nationally affiliated branded hotel, and we have already started the process of engineering and design, which you'll see the site plan here on your screen. We did meet with other members of the city staff and the planning meetings for the site plan preapproval and from which we received comments that have been incorporated into the site plan, conforming to all of the standards and regulations set forth in the development guidelines. Due to the size of the site, we are requesting a parking variance from 1.5 spaces per unit to a one-to-one ratio. And in our documentation and application, I was able to locate with respect to other, I guess jurisdictions', is parking requirements for a one-to-one. And aside from that, all other height restrictions, parking, landscaping buffers, setbacks, things of that nature for this entire site do conform to the city standards. And so I just wanted to make this recommend or request to the ZBA board here to see if they would consider this request for a parking variance for our development.
All right, thank you, Mr. Patel. Any questions from the board for Mr. Patel? I do have a question, if you know.
Yes, sir.
About how many employees on-site at any given shift?
On any given time, our peak hours would be from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., which would be the majority of the time the employees would be on-site, maybe about 15 employees.
Okay. And I see on the ground plan there is no banquet room or meeting room.
We don't have the space on the site for any specific meeting space and/or any...
So no large events coming, no conventions?
No, sir. It's just strictly going to be... Yes, and this Homewood Suites by Hilton brand is a brand catered toward more extended stay, and so hence, it's a limited service facility, not catering toward full service without restaurant, banquet, bar, or anything like that.
All right, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak for case 22-12 BAC? Anyone wish to speak against 22-12 BAC? All right, what do we hear?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hendricks, second by Mr. Crawford to approve. There's no discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Just real quickly, Mr. Patel?
Yes, sir.
In looking at the map of that area, there is quite a bit of parking surface area on every side of you.
That's right.
That appears to be underused by some of the commercial businesses that are there. Are you having conversations with those businesses about some type of park sharing potentially if you did feel that you didn't have enough parking?
Yeah. Well, we have had the conversation about any potential parking use. However, the current owners and/or tenants of that specific area, I guess, are corporate. And, for example, immediately adjacent to our site here is an at-home retail box. There's also further a little bit south, Whole Foods Development there. And so we have had that conversation about any parking use, but in hospitality, we've seen that there is never a need for a maximum use of parking spaces that are allotted per code. You know, we've been developing hospitality properties for the last 15 years, and I've always come across a one-to-one ratio. And so rather than extra concrete space and unutilized space, our humble request was for us to bring a quality development so that it is of a good scale, good size, it's good for the community. However, for us to be able to do that, the only consideration or trade-off would be is to allow us to utilize the parking on a one-to-one basis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Patel. All right, if there are no further questions, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Tap 9 is case 22-13 BAC, 6005 Yuri Drive. Sliders.
Good afternoon. I am Joshua Webb. I'm an employee of AAA Signs. We are the fabricator of the sign, and we are also the applicant for this case.
All right, I need your mailing address, please.
It's 109 Burgess Drive, and that's Broussard, Louisiana, 70518.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Please continue.
So we are applying for a variance for the sign located at Smalls Sliders. They have about four current locations. They are a Louisiana-based company. They are trying to, since they're just getting started, they're trying to have it more of a cookie cutter for their signage, which is why we're asking for the variance so that it has the same-sized sign at each location, and you don't have a variance of different sizes. What is allowed at this location is 40 square feet, and we are asking for 77.33 square feet. The building is set back over 100 feet from the center line of Yuri Drive, so it's set back pretty far from the roadway for visibility with only allowing 40 square feet, which is a little bit bigger than a sheet of plywood. I'm trying to think what else. Did you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Webb?
Mr. Chair, I do have a comment. When he mentioned the size, that is, if you measure that from the rectangular space of the sign, that's the sign area.
Correct.
But if you do it more precisely to follow the letters themselves, then it's only 43 square feet. So it just barely exceeds the requirement.
Yeah, it's a 7.5% increase, I believe.
Right.
Correct. What we're voting on today. All right. Any further questions from the board for Mr. Webb? All right, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak for case 22-13 BAC? Anyone wish to speak against 22-13 BAC? All right, what do we hear?
I'm for approval. One second.
Is that Mr. Crawford?
Yeah.
Sorry. Brandon and Mr. Woods, motion and second. Any discussion? All right, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Tap 10 is case 22-14 BAC, Hershey D. Wilson Drive, Ronnie Theus.
Good evening. My name is Ronnie Theus, 1664 Hershey D. Wilson. On the property and questions, I was trying to get a modular home moved on there.
All right. I think we've been briefed. This is the one, I believe, if staff correct me, that needed to be painted. Is that true? Mr. Jean?
No.
Okay. That must be the one that we skipped.
Yes, sir.
All right, so this is a new unit that you're having brought in, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Theus from the board? All right, thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak for case 22-14 BAC? Please come forward if you wish to speak. You'll have to come to the... You'll have to come to the microphone, sir.
Thank you. My name is Reverend Empress Mills, here in Shreveport, I live at 4610 Alton Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, and I received this notice regarding the property and so forth. I have some there, and my mother have some in that area, and I have a concern about the, if something is built there other than a regular house, would it have an effect on the value of the property and things of that nature? That's my concern.
Yes, sir. I'm not an expert in manufactured homes, but...
Because it...
I've been on this board for a while, and many people who are experts have spoken to us before, and I will say that the general trend for new manufactured homes in an area, it tend to increase property value.
It decreases, you said?
Increase. It typically helps the neighborhood because of the way these... This is not your standard single-wide that we're used to thinking about. And I believe that several studies show that a new double-wide manufactured home brought in, skirted, landscaped, porch added on the front, which we require, tends to, in the neighborhoods they tend to go into as infill, tend to increase property values for the general close adjoining area.
I understand that, but there are times when we have problems not with houses and other things, and that area is really zoned for houses, period, you know, houses, and then if you start putting something this in there, thinking about in terms of the value of the property, the crime, or other things, and so there's a whole lot to take into consideration, whether they're just putting something up there.
All right. Did I answer your question?
What's that?
Did I answer your question?
Not that I'm happy with it, but you answered the question.
Okay. Well, like I said, I'm not an expert, but the testimony we have received in the past tends to say that, I mean, these are typically built, you know, just because they're built in a factory doesn't necessarily mean that they're not quality homes. And they're brought in, and typically, especially if there's not a structure on the property and it has not been for a while, this puts a new...
I'm very familiar with the property.
I'm sorry?
I'm very familiar with that surrounding.
Right.
I grew up there years ago, and she have some property, and my mother have some there also. And on the other hand, I'm very familiar with construction work because I owned the company once, and I'm very familiar with that.
Okay.
And so forth on that part, even though it's been, as the engineer would say, many moons since I did such and that, and I passed the church here in the city, and I also taught physics here in the city and so forth.
All right, well, thank you for your comments, and we will take it into consideration.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak for case 22-14? Anyone else wish to speak against this case? All right, what do we hear? Move to approve. Motion by Mr. Hendricks, second by Mr. Woods to approve. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Case 22-15 BAC, Ms. Neal, Mandy Neal, Hershey D. Wilson Drive.
My name is Mandy Neal. My address is 213 Old Pail Mary Road in Benton, Louisiana. I'm also up, it's going to be next door to Ryan, and Ryan is my... I'm also up, it's gonna be next door to Ryan, and Ryan is my son. I'm putting it there for my mother, a modular home, and we are also from the area, raised up in the area, right down the street from this old, it will be kept up, so that's pretty much it.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Neal? All right, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak for case 22-15BAC? Anyone wish to speak against 22-15BAC? All right, what do we hear?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hendrix, second by Mr. Crawford. Motion carries unanimously. Tap 12 is case 22-17BAC, Fifth Avenue, Daisy Scott. All right, Chair moves to go out of order and move this case to the end of the agenda. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrix, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. That takes us to tap 13, case number 22-18BAC, 602 Kirby Place.
How y'all doing today?
Good, thank you. I need your full name and mailing address, please.
Robin Snyder, 412 Ottley, 71105.
Yes, ma'am.
This property involves my son's house. He got injured in Iraq and decided to move back home to Shreveport, and I bought this house, technically, he bought this house. It was under a Trump deal where a parent could buy a disabled son, a child, a house with zero down and 3%. I couldn't pass up that deal. Going back on the history, back in 1960, zoning passed a variance on this property and allowed Senator Davis to build a parking lot on this property on Lot 30 for the Cresswell Baptist Church to have additional parking. On the other part of this property was a carriage house, which is where my son lives. He bought this property because when he came back from Iraq, he went to Louisiana Tech, and he got a degree, and he does home improvements. He hires convicted felons, and he teaches them trades and gets them back on their feet. He pays them good, but he needed a place where it had a parking lot. Now, when we bought the property, it was listed as 2732 Cresswell. That's what we paid the mortgage in, and in fact, he got a code violation the other day to 2732 Cresswell. So imagine my surprise when I got this zoning violation on Kirby. What happened was the original house burnt down in World War II, and it was torn down, but the utilities at that time were done on Kirby Street, so that's the way it was listed. Now, when you look at it, the sewage main and everything is on this property, and it's behind the fenced-in area, so he needed to build a shed to put his lawnmower in, so he replaced a commercial tent that was on this property with a building, and the building came from my backyard that him and his dad built, a kit from Lowe's. He moved it, and he put it as close as he could to the fence, but he couldn't put it in the fenced-in area because that is where the water sewage main is for the city of Shreveport, and they have dug it up several times. So I'm applying for a variance for this shed that is on a parking lot that is listed as his front yard, but his mortgage is listed as 2732 Cresswell, and so is the 5G tower that they put on his property. It's listed as Cresswell, and he still has a 40-year lease with the church, which was stamped by the Clerk of Court of Cattle Parish as 2732 Cresswell. So I'm asking this board for a variance for this shed.
Okay, so I have several questions now. Is it one lot, or is it two lots?
It's Lot 30 and 35 feet of Lot 29. The carriage house is on Lot 29.
Okay, but, so the mortgage is on one lot?
It's one lot, and when you originally looked at, this is where it gets strange. When we originally looked at Cattle Parish, it said residential, sub-commercial, and when I told Terrence Green all this, and I gave him the minutes read into the City Council from this zoning board from 1960, it had been passed, it had been changed at Cattle Parish, and after I read him into those minutes, I reprinted out, and it had been changed at Cattle Parish. And I called the young man at Cattle Parish, I said, "Who changed it?" And he said, "Well, I received a phone call telling me to change it. I never knew you could call down at Cattle Parish and change zoning with a phone call." And I said, "No, sir, I never called you." So he changed it back. Now he's changed it to warehouses and something else instead of a parking lot.
Well, okay.
So I'm really confused, but it was a special variance done in 1960.
Right, I'm confused too, and I feel like this might be something we need to consider to defer and continue if we can find out what the actual address is. Mr. Jean?
Well, I understand there's been a lot of discussion about the address, but I think, you know, what we have put in the staff report, I don't think that is that relevant of an issue. And the discussion about the, what the tax assessor says the use is, is not zoning, and it's not what we consider the use. The use was approved by the Zoning Board of Appeal as a parking lot in the front, so it is a quasi-commercial use, but I don't believe that having a definitive answer on what the address should be has any real bearing on what you can make a decision on today.
But if it's, address is on Cresswell, it's no longer his front yard, which is what the variance is for.
And see, that's where we got confused. That's why my son, he put it as close as he could to the fenced-in area.
I understand that, I mean, this is more of a technical issue.
Yeah.
I mean, if he gets a tax notice on Cresswell
The tax notice has both addresses.
This becomes his side yard, does it not?
Yeah.
Yes, and technically, corner side.
Right, but not the front. If his legal record, legal record, legal address of record is on Cresswell.
See, if you look at the picture, you see that.
I understand. I'm just saying, this is kind of a technical issue between what the address is versus what we're about to vote on, and I feel like there may be an error in the staff report, which I don't want to vote on if it's not accurate.
The address that we have that's listed is what is on the report.
Right, but if that's not the correct address, I would just like some verification of that, I think, before I vote on anything. We can discuss that in a moment. Are there any questions from the board for Ms. Snyder? Other questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Woods?
If it's not the address, and is there a variance required for the side of the house?
That's what I'd like to know.
And I do have, all the neighbors around were, the neighbor directly across the street, which is a two-story building, see, you can't even see where the building is because there's a massive tree there. They're the only ones who can directly see the building, and I have just a signed note from them that they don't have a problem. He painted
So where does he, let me ask you, where does he receive mail?
My house.
I mean, for this property?
He doesn't receive mail there.
Where did you get the notice for this meeting?
My house.
Okay, so, does he have a mailing address there?
He doesn't receive mail there because he's like
Does he, does he get
He's gotta get a tax notice there.
Yeah, does he get a homestead exemption?
No, he doesn't, because it's in my name.
So the tax notice goes to your house?
It's paid through the mortgage company, so he doesn't, I got it, I received it. I received it. Because it's in, the house is in my name. They came and assessed it, but I mean, it's in my name until September, and then I don't know where it will go.
Right, but the address of the property on the tax notice is what?
It's the Kirby address.
Oh, okay, see, but you said it was Cresswell before.
It's on, they have both addresses on the notice. It's got, it's addressed to me, but it's got 602, and it's got 2732 Cresswell. It's got both addresses.
Which then to me asks if it's not two lots, one on Kirby and then one on Cresswell.
Yeah.
Which also raises a question, if it's a separate lot, then it becomes
I think what the original
Pardon me, then it becomes a accessory structure without a main structure.
I think what the original problem was is when they built the parking lot, it was owned by the church, and the church originally had a Cresswell, it has a Cresswell address, but a different Cresswell address. So I think it listed everything probably under, all the church properties under Cresswell addresses.
Okay.
I think that's how it was developed, because they still have the lease, which was stamped by the Clerk of Court under Cresswell address.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
Anyone else wish to speak for case 22-18BAC? Anyone wish to speak against case 22-18BAC?
Hello, yes, my name is Jonathan Corey Smith, really representing Heritage Baptist Church. So I don't know if you want the address of the church or my home address?
Wherever you'd like to receive information about pertaining to this case.
So representing the church, Heritage Baptist Church, so 2801 Cresswell Avenue.
Okay.
Shreveport, Louisiana. So I don't know too much about, so I'm the pastor there at Heritage Baptist Church. We just got a, you know, a notice in the mail, and I don't know everything that's going into it, but I just wanted to come because we do have a lease there on the property and our church. We're a young, thriving church in the neighborhood, and we use that parking lot. We use that parking lot, we have our own parking lot, and just want to make sure that nothing's, I have, we have a lease there until 2049, you know, I have the documentation here, but just wanted to make sure nothing's happening there in which it obscures, you know, our parking, because we have that lease for the parking.
So you've, how is the space delineated for your use on the lease? Is it a certain square footage, or is it?
Let's see.
And do you actually use it?
Yeah, yeah, we do, well, primarily just on Sundays. Sundays.
So you've leased the whole parking lot?
Yes.
But you don't have the use of the whole parking lot, because now there's usually a working, a construction trailer, a boat
Right.
And other equipment, and now a storage building on there.
Right, right.
Which raises for me questions of what the right does the lessee have in this matter?
Right, right, and
Because you've got a lease for the entire property.
Right, right.
That's a question for me, too.
Yeah, and, you know, we use that parking lot a great deal, and as we're growing as a church, you know, we would like to do more on that, but the main thing here is just, I don't know exactly what's being built there and all those sorts of things, we just want to make sure that that parking is available.
It's already there.
Okay.
That's it right there, that's the building.
Gotcha, okay.
But that trailer is also often parked there, as is a boat
And other
And often other vehicles.
Right, so I guess that's a separate issue for me to bring up about, but, yeah, I mean, we, you know, our churches, we have our own parking lot, but yeah, we have that lease there, and we need it really for parking.
Right.
But
All right, any questions from the board for Mr. Smith? All right, thank you, sir.
Well, I guess one question, is anything, what's the right protocol to go through on just making sure we have that space available for parking?
Well, that might be for an attorney to decide, to look at your lease and find out, or I don't know if Mr. Jean can direct you in the right, you know, direction for that.
Thank you.
But I would think you, you know, want to find out what your lease says and what your rights and obligations are.
Okay.
As a private agreement, we would not be involved in that.
Yeah, so I would
Just talk to a lawyer.
Get an attorney to have them look at it and see.
Okay, awesome, thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, is he paying the
The church is paying
Is the church paying them for the space?
Well, they've leased it, I don't know what the terms of the lease are.
Well, it was a lease for 50 years, beginning, I guess in 99, until 2049, and it's basically, I have the lease here with me.
And do you pay a monthly fee, or is it a one-time?
Well, I think it's a one-time deal, so we've paid it up until that point.
Okay.
Yeah, I have the lease here.
I would get that checked out.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak against 22-18BAC? All right, Ms. Snyder, would you like a rebuttal? Oh, no, sorry, you're coming against?
I'm gonna rebuttal.
You're gonna rebuttal, okay. I'll need your full name and mailing address.
Hi, I'm Jacob Snyder. I live at, the mailing address is 602 Kirby Place. I believe it is mailing address 602 Kirby Place because that's where the utilities feed from, because the utilities in Highland run east and west and not up and down Cresswell, so the utilities have always ran at that place.
But I need, wherever you're gonna get mail, because if
Yes, sir, that's 602 Kirby.
All right, very good, please continue.
And so if you notice from the picture of the lot
Yes.
The picture from the lot, there's two separate entrances, so, and the lease agreement, it's Lot 30 and 35 feet of Lot East 29, there's two entrances, one from Kirby Street, that is to the parking lot, and the other one would be what I originally considered my side yard, which is obviously, it's in the lease agreement with the church, and I have no problem. The church uses the lot as they need to, whenever they need to, we never have a problem. And the building that we put there was a direct replacement for a commercial tent that was already there, but the snowstorm collapsed it, and so we just swapped it out with the building that I'd already had.
So what do you use this building and
I store some of my lawn equipment in there, and I do carpentry work, just small carpentry work, build tables and stuff like that.
That's Catahoula?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, it's actually personal, that's not connected to my business at all.
So what's your business?
Catahoula Residential Construction.
Okay. Okay. Please continue.
Okay, and we'd considered it my side yard because when we bought the house, the address on the agreement for the house when we bought it was the 2732 Cresswell address, so since the carriage house faces, kind of faces Cresswell, we'd always considered that my side yard, and if we were to distinctly draw a line on the lot, I would have to have a driveway, which means the driveway that is there on the lot, this would have to be my driveway into my side yard, which means the lot line would have to cut across there somewhere. And then so when I put that shed there, I just kind of assumed that was kind of in my backyard, not my, or my backyard or my side yard, really, if you will, instead of not in my front yard, which is what the zoning variant, which is what the variance is for because the, says I can't have a structure in my front yard, but I technically don't have a front yard in this instance, and it is a mixed residential and commercial property. Our paperwork says that also. It says it's a, when we bought the house, it said it was a commercial, or a commercial sublot with residential property, and when I called the zoning office, they could not actually describe to us what that meant.
Okay. I mean, if your legal address is 602 Kirby, then it is your front yard for our purposes.
Yes, well, yes.
And I'm trying to look at this, but don't let me interrupt you, keep going.
Okay, I think that's all I have.
All right, any questions for Mr. Snyder from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Crawford?
Mr. Snyder?
Yes, sir.
Earlier, Mrs. Snyder commented that you weren't able to construct the shed in the backyard because of the water line.
Yes, sir.
So I'm looking at a pretty good-sized backyard, and the shed, I'm trying to figure out, if we go to that picture, the water line only comes in in one place.
Yes, sir, so it's got water lines coming from Kirby?
Show me where it's at.
Oh, sorry. From Kirby, the water lines and the gas lines come from Kirby, and then Oh, sorry, from Kirby, the water lines and the gas lines come from Kirby, and then cut in here, and then the main Shreveport city sewage line actually runs almost under my house, and then through the entire backyard.
Okay, so using your description, it looks like, and I'm just gonna go, say north is the top part, the north part is encumbered by the sewer line, and the south, let's just say eastern portion has the water line coming in from the parking lot. What's to prevent you from putting the shed in the back-left lower corner? I'm just trying to figure out, you, you certainly have some lines in there, we all do in our homes...
Yes, sir.
But what's to stop you from constructing that in some of your portions that are unencumbered by those utilities?
I mean, not much. I guess, uh, I would just, I guess I'd like to say that if that is my house, and then I would like to assume that my backyard starts at the back of my house, because my address on the, all the mortgage paperwork and everything that we bought was 2732 Crestwell, so I put it as far back as I could...
Sure.
Back here, because this area has already been gated in and everything like that. And then I wouldn't have access to it from my side unless I were to have to take that fence down.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Snyder? All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
What do we hear?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Crawford?
I make a motion that we table this request. There's a, there's a lot of outstanding issues here. I, for one, not always the smartest person in the room, but I'm a little bit confused about property rights here, leases, um, as the gentleman from the church described, who's he leasing from, what are his rights? I know that's between his and his attorney, but I think if we're making a decision here on a structure that's gonna be on a piece of property, I think we need to make sure that that property owner has the right to that use. And I'd like a little more clarification on this Kirby-Crestwell issue about where the property actually lies. That's my motion, Mr. Chair.
All right, do we have a second?
I say.
Dr. Brandon, beat you to it, Mr. Woods?
Okay.
Yeah, and I would just like to say in addition, I mean, I have questions about where the actual, if this is actually one lot of record, or if there are incidental subdivided property lines that may come into play, which that may have come up, I don't know, Mr. Jean, but I, I think we would like more clarification in general.
Sure.
All right, so that's the motion to defer and continue for 30 days.
Yes, sir.
By Mr. Crawford, second by Dr. Brandon, and I think we're ready to vote unless there's further discussion. Ready? All right, thank you. All right, motion carries unanimously. All right, that brings us to case number 29-19BAC. 1603 Rex, here we go, Rex Avenue.
Uh, good evening, my name's Robert Payne, 1603 Rex in Shreveport 71101. I am the pastor of St. Mary AME Church, and we are seeking to build a sign, get a sign variance, because right now we are only allowed to have a sign of eight foot, but due to the shape of our property and where our property line is located, there is a hill that if we put an eight-foot sign there, you would not be able to see it. And so we need a sign with a pole of approximately 16 feet so that folks will be able to see it. One of the interesting things about our property, if you will notice, the steeple faces Rex, and the back of our church is Yuri. As our foreparents built the church, they built it facing the community, and there's a small sign in the front, but as you know today, all of the traffic is on Yuri. And so we need to put that sign on Yuri so that people will stop saying to me, "I didn't know there was a church there." And so similar to some of the other churches that are on Yuri on that end, we would like to have a, a pole sign that would stand up and show that the church actually exists here in the Stonerhill community.
And do you have a question, sir?
Yes, sir.
How will the sign be oriented as it relates to Yuri? Will it be in, in line with Yuri or 90 degrees?
90 degrees.
Okay, just wanted to be clear.
Yes, sir.
All right, any further, or any questions for Reverend Payne? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak for case 22-19BAC?
Hi, my name is Lauren Anderson. I actually live right around the corner at 247 East Lister. I'm trying to understand where the sign is, or where the proposed sign is.
It will be, Mr. Coby will show you on there.
If I can just state where that little St. Mary, where the little symbol is in the back, right there, it'll be about in that, in that area of...
Yeah, Ben, could you just show her on the map?
Yeah, it'll be here, on your...
Okay, that's Yuri Drive, that's Herndon Street.
And here's Rex.
Okay, right here, okay, right here?
Yeah, on Yuri's floor.
Uh-huh.
Maybe just to give a little more context, here's Yuri, Herndon, or Rex.
So it'll be, the sign will be more so on the corner of Herndon and Yuri.
And there's a service road over there, too.
Yeah, it'll be within the church property, honestly.
Okay, so it, well, there's that, there's a service road, and then there's the strip...
Okay, ma'am, ma'am, I'll have to have you address us.
Oh, uh, two, wait, my bad. I'm just concerned about where the sign is, um...
It'll be on the church property, just, that would be east of the service road on Yuri.
Okay, but there's east of the service road.
Oh, yeah, the, the church property is east...
You mean west of the service road?
I mean, sorry, west, west of the service road on Yuri, on, on the church property.
Okay, so it'll be church property, the service road, and then...
Yes.
Uh, the strip of land, and then Yuri.
Yes.
I mean, so long as it doesn't interfere with the visibility, you know, turning on and off, in and out of that intersection, that's already a dangerous intersection. There's already a memorial there where a child died, because the visibility notoriously in that intersection is bad.
Well, you know, as you know, the property, the topography goes down, it'll be down in that, uh, lower part on the church property, which was well back from the street. And the reason for the variance is to get the sign up out of that low-lying area so that it can be visible. Otherwise, it would have to be a monument sign, which, which could be put in by right.
Okay, I'm just saying, I don't have, you know, I, I really like them in our community. Every time I drive past, they always seem like very nice people.
Sure.
I think they're wonderful for our community, and I do have faith in them, but I did want to bring everybody's attention to that dangerous intersection.
All right, thank you very much.
So please be mindful of that.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else wish to speak? Or anyone wish to speak against case 2219? All right, what do we hear?
I move that we grant the variance.
All right, motion to approve by Mr. Woods?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hendricks?
Clarification, Mr. Chair?
Uh, yes.
Um, is that, is that granting all the variances, or is it just what the staff has recommended?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right, we have two portions of this, we have the height and the size.
You want me to read, read to my motion?
Yeah, well, what is your motion? Is it, is it to grant a variance for the size and the larger sign, or just the height?
The height and the size.
Okay, but not, should we vote on this, on two votes, Mr. Jean?
You could, yes, it's, so it's, but I, I think if you just made a good, clear motion, that, that you wouldn't have to have a separate vote.
All right, so if I may rephrase, Mr. Woods, I think your motion is to approve the variance for the height of the sign, but to deny...
And the, and the sign type.
And the type, being a pole sign, but deny the variance for the increased size.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, that's...
That's, that's the motion on the table. Mr. Hendricks, do you maintain your second? All right, any discussion? All right, ready to vote? Thank you, Mr. Jean. Motion, uh, motion carries unanimously. All right, this brings us back to case 22-11BAC. Is there anyone here for Mr. Candalas, Candalas on Club Pines Road? All right, well, we, we can still, is there anyone here to speak for or against this case? Do we have a motion on this case? We, we can either vote on it and dispose, dispense with it, or we can defer and continue.
Which case, which get to, which one?
Well, we're back to tab seven. It's case 22-11BAC, this was a manufactured home. This was the one that we requested, it's an older unit, and we requested or required it to be painted. Is that correct, Mr. Jean?
That's correct.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Crawford?
I make a motion that we request the special exception use with the stipulations provided by the board.
All right, so that's to approve?
Of staff, I'm sorry.
All right, so, Mr. Woods, all right, so Mr. Crawford moves to approve. Mr. Woods seconds to approve as per the staff report. No discussion, please vote. And then our other case that we moved was case tab 12, case 22-17BAC. Fifth Avenue Daisy Scott, is anyone here for this case? Either for or against? All right, what do we hear?
I move to approve the staff assessment.
All right, motion by Mr. Hendricks, second by Mr. Woods, to approve, uh, as, as per staff report. Please vote. All right, that brings us to the end of our public hearing. We have, um, no old business, we do have some new business. Mr. Jean, if you will instruct us in how we're going to, uh, go about drawing lots for our term assignments?
So I listed the, the help from our attorney to come around. So what, just reach inside of that box, and there'll be a piece of paper, and it has all the various terms, and, uh, so whatever you draw out, we would like you to go ahead and, um, state what that term is as you draw.
Okay.
And I'd also like to add that since we have two board members who are missing, we're going to have to do it again for them two, those two for the next, next month's meeting, just so they can draw as well.
Between the two of them?
Yes, that's correct. Whatever's left, they'll draw from them.
Very good.
And then...
Uh, will you come to us, or should we come to you?
Uh, oh.
All right.
Normally I would have other staff to help out, but I had to enlist, list her today.
Here's staff for this, this month. All right, so we just got, we'll start down there at, at the far end with Dr. Brandon?
One year.
All right, uh, you taking notes for this? All right. Mr. Crawford?
Five years.
Uh, I'm two years.
Four years.
Two years.
All right, and then that leaves two to be drawn next month, or the next time they're here.
Yes, correct.
All right, uh, directors report, Mr. Jean?
Don't have one today, other than to say that Mr. Clark is on vac, a well-deserved vacation, he'll be back in the office on Monday. If you need anything this week, just continue to contact me.
All right.
I guess there's, you know, just, just as, some of the things that are going on, we, we, you may be aware of, and it's, it's been in the news some, uh, we presented to the Safety Committee today with the City Council regarding liquor. If some of y'all remember back in the day when this board decided those cases, um, we have some recommendations that are moving forward, you'll probably see some of that in, in the media over the next few weeks. There has been some changes recommended by the MPC Board, and that will go on to council, I believe it would be August 9th, when they'll be hearing that. And so, uh, as you, you've probably heard, there was a moratorium at one time, and now that, uh, we're, we're able to do a study, we presented that study and the findings, and, uh, so hopefully we'll be able to, um, have an ordinance that would allow that use to continue to, to be in the city of Shreveport, but it be at locations and regulated in such a manner that it will not be a negative impact to, to neighborhoods. That's pretty much all I have.
The only thing I have is, uh, hereby am paneling a nominating committee to fill out the officers of the ZBA. Ms. Henderson, who is not here, Mr. Hendricks and Mr. Crawford, or the three I'm nomin, placing on this nominating committee. Mr. Hendricks, you will take the lead and, and get together with Mr. Crawford and Ms. Henderson over the next 30 days, and come up with a slate of officers. We need a vice chair and a secretary to carry us out through December. And then in December, we will do this again, correct, Mr. Jean?
Yes, sir.
For next year? So it's a minimal commitment. All right, any comments from the board?
That's right.
Uh, don't forget, if you didn't get your picture taken today, the photographer will be back next, next week at the same time, I believe, on Wednesday. All right, there's no further comments or questions, we are adjourned.